Welcome to the workshop. We're going to discuss the situation of our behavior towards the last week. The last week, it was just about this one because their behavior is like, they were so that's why it's important to be careful. Now, this stream froze on YouTube. Ah, there you go. Which makes sense.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what, um, I don't know. I'm trying to think what kids are taking. For the world, right? Everybody's, we can talk about that.
Yeah.
Oh, and acting back. Yes, it's much two different representatives. Last year, we had a very bad show. We do every weekend.
Exactly.
We never work so hard as somebody. Scared. Just want to be there. Why? Guys, if you have, you know, you just go up and close on it. This year, it's nice.
I got an iPad computer. How much? Okay, so the rates is down.
Right.
The series. I think that one thing you do is kind of change when you train up her. And all these.
What's up, Seth?
Some reading material. Thank you. I know that's from you. I appreciate it. You're part of my professional development plan. I want you to know that. And I'm grateful. Thank you. Yeah, well.
Of what to me? Yeah. You have to.
You know me, I'm not overly.
I know. We want to support you. Thank you. Feel free to jump in. Cameras are not making.
[laughing]
Which they mean on Friday. So, or just. Are you talking about? She goes to Thompson. Yeah. So, we make do it Friday morning.
See, this is my hobby. Get out of middle school and get off.
Scare pretty much misses something.
No, no, no.
Which is very possible.
No, no, it's me. I just assumed she was my friend.
No.
Yeah, right. Wait a second. That's. Right. So. I'm. 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 So. Why do we won't go up on the screen? Is there a lot? A lot? Little, little video. Oh, okay. I didn't know. Yeah. No, I, I run it through the. And that takes hours. Loaded. But it real. It's big. Sounds. It's better. But you can sell them. Oh, so there is this next one. But if you don't hear. It's been louder than you. Big, but I don't need it. Otherwise. The way.
Okay, this meeting will now come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Township Public Schools District website, and the posting of such notice at the Augustine Minor Administrative Offices at each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Roll call.
Mrs. Caminiti. Mr. DeFranco.
Here.
Mr. Donlin. Mr. Daimo.
Here.
Mr. Little.
Here.
Mrs. Menues.
Here.
Mrs. Stellan.
Here.
Mrs. Rogers.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for Patricia Walla, who passed away on January ninth, two thousand nineteen. Mrs. Walla worked for the district in student services from June nineteen eighty-six until her retirement in June two thousand five. And for Dr. Lawrence O'Neil, who passed away on January thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Dr. O'Neil was elected to the Board of Education in April nineteen seventy-four through April nineteen eighty-eight. Pledge allegiance.
To the United States, our friends, and our country. To the world, to the nation, to the God, to the citizens, to the good conditions for all.
Okay, we'd like to start with our committee reports tonight. We'll start with technology.
Good evening. I have two items on tonight's workshop agenda. The first one is High School North-South Press Box Fiber Connectivity Project. Earlier this week, Sollina Communications completed the fiber connectivity projects, which created a connection to both press boxes, High School North and High School South, thus allowing it to be on our network. The reason that the project began was for installation of new pixelated cameras in the press boxes. For those that you've not worked with pixelated cameras, these cameras use artificial intelligence to record and stream video without any user intervention. They actually have the ability to go and zoom in on certain depths of vents without any intervention from a human. The nice part of the project as well is that we have available bandwidth on that connection as well. So in the future, if we choose to put security cameras out on the field, creatures are out there, we can. We can also provide Wi-Fi or wireless bandwidth connections to the press box and also to surround the area. The second item is the E-Rate four seventy posting. The last workshop, we discussed the E-Rate and the category two, and that this year is the last year that guarantee has been fully funded. That and also the fact that our wireless network is nearly eight to ten years old, depending on location, provides a great opportunity for us to go and post a new four seventy for wireless access points to the district. So that being said, last month, we posted our E-Rate four seventy for wireless access points across the district to replace the existing ones, as well as to add additional ones in dead zones in our schools. The posting blessed the twenty-eight day bids, which closed on Monday, so now the business office, I can throw it to myself, we're going through the bids to find the most competitive bidder, and they were presented to the board for the contract.
How, how many bids was that?
We didn't receive all of them yet because our E-Rate vendor has it, but as, I've seen five. They told us to wait a few more days because they're still coming in for over the weekend. They need to go through. Just to give you an idea, our current existing access points allow twenty-five to thirty-five users per connection and allow about a five hundred and seventy megabit bandwidth throughput. The new ones that we're proposing are eight oh two eleven A access, their latest technology that'll allow a minimum of a hundred and fifty users per access point with a throughput of four point eight gigabytes. So it'll give us plenty of room for growth in the future as well. Questions?
Thank you. Thanks, Dave. Okay, moving on to student services.
Good evening. We're going to be recommending thirty-two students for home instruction, four students for out-of-district placement, approval of a settlement agreement, and also approval of extended school year dates of July eighth to August fifteenth, the locations to be determined at a later point, depending upon construction that possibly will be done in the summer. We're going to be sending a contingent of students out to the Derek Green Conference on March fifteenth. Looks to be about twenty students, and it's a program where students get to talk about and share their self-advocacy and how they've overcome some of the obstacles of having a disability. It's a great opportunity. At this point, we may have one or two students presenting. Last year, we had one of our students with a keynote speaker. So today, where our students get to meet other students within the Middlesex and Monmouth County areas and just kind of share their stories. We're going to be doing a presentation on April sixteenth with the curriculum department on our IRNS process within the district. That'll be here at High School North from six-thirty to seven-thirty. We'll be sending a flyer out. Pretty much it, student services. Any questions or anything?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to curriculum and instruction.
Speak as speak. Please feel free to jump in at any time here. We met on February eleventh, and we discussed a lot, but I'll be as brief as I can. We got an update about the senior flex option. There was a presentation for juniors where they, the idea of the senior flex, flex option was first launched. They created a permission slip, and for students to be involved in this flex option, the students are required to provide documentation that they're on track to graduate, meaning that they completed the required coursework. They met state standardized test guidelines, assessment requirements, and that's what they need to get the principal's approval. But in addition, the parents also have to give consent. Students will be responsible for their own transportation. Parking passes aren't guaranteed. They might have to consider carpooling. And this would be really excellent opportunity, first of all, a motivator for students to get all their coursework done, but this is a great way for students to partake in internships, get jobs, take higher level coursework. G and T, we had an update about the G and T program, which is new. The first, well, they're in the midst of the first ten-week cycle. Right now, it's for students in grades one to six. They're being pulled, I'm sorry. It's being facilitated by the elementary and middle school educational technology specialists. Right now, the kids are pursuing personalized learning experience based on their own interests and academic aptitudes. For K to two students, the technology specialists are pushing into their classrooms just to support their individual learning efforts, along with the classroom teachers. Students at the grades three to six level, they do have the opportunity for some pull-out consultation time each week with the tech specialists, just so that they could be more supported in their learning pursuits. And just some, some examples of some of the projects that they're working on, service learning, pursuits, entrepreneurial undertakings, and traditional research. The second, the second cycle will begin mid-March, and they'll continuously rescreen the student population to have as many students involved in the program as possible. In time for the second cycle, kindergarten students will also be screened for inclusion in this program. Students who are already in it can remain in it as long as they're keeping up with their schoolwork, and they'll be continuously rescreened throughout the year. Is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Just that I think we were all really impressed by the types of personalized learning topics that the students are pursuing, that they came up with on their own.
I saw coding. There were a lot of different ones.
So how many, how many kids are?
Um, oh. How many students are involved, are captured by our first round, our first ten-week cycle? I want to say at least a hundred, I want to say, just by off the top of my head. It was a large number, relatively for what, speaking for what we anticipated.
And when does the cycle end, the next one?
Mid-March. And the goal is to include as many students as possible.
And then, is there a topic you can share in terms of what you've heard? Like, there's a project.
Okay, so I saw there was a list. One kid, student, was doing a project, trying to raise awareness of the SPCA. Another student did a project while actually teaching himself to code, things like that. So just whatever they're interested in, they get to work at at their own pace, based on interest and their aptitude. So, seems very successful so far.
Yes. Good parent feedback so far.
Arts Academy, good news from the Arts Academy. Fifty-five students applied this year for acceptance for net, for the two thousand nineteen-twenty school year. Fourteen are zoned for South, and forty-one students are zoned for North from this group. This is more than double the total number of applicants from last year. Just to break down, give you a breakdown of numbers from each school. Eighteen are from Bay Shore, four from Thompson, eighteen from Thorn, thirteen are currently enrolled at High School North, and two students are currently enrolled at South. Then, as far as the different tracks, there were twelve applicants for track, twelve for digital media arts, thirteen for fine and applied arts, three for instrumental music, nine for theater and drama, and six for vocal music. The auditions, interviews, and portfolio reviews are in progress, and they'll be completed by the end of this week, and students will be notified of their status by early March. Previously, they mentioned master classes. The teachers who will teach the master classes met on February fifth and began planning. And one other thing I wanted to mention, I wanted to give a really big thank you to the mayor and deputy mayor for securing the Middletown Arts Center for us, for the dance program, at no charge, which is fantastic, so thank you. Anything else there about Arts Academy? Okay, job embedded PD at the secondary level. So, as a teacher, I always find that I want to meet with my colleagues, and I want to have meaningful dialogue, and I would like to go in and observe their classroom, but there's never time during the school day. And when we have professional days, well, then, there is, you know, no class in session, so nothing to really observe. This new program, it allows the Middletown teachers time with their colleagues during the actual school day. For the rest of the school year, teachers can serve as, as either a lab site, host, or visitor. If you're a visiting teacher, you get the full day off and get a substitute. There is an opening informational session where they brainstorm, then classroom visits in multiple buildings, and then end of the day debrief. And if you're a host teacher, you get the afternoon off in order to join the colleagues after your rooms have been visited, and to meet and talk and, you know, undergo professional development. And the goal is really for all the secondary course subject teachers to participate in this initiative by the end of the year. And there'll be follow-up sessions, as well as a Google Classroom that's been created so that teachers can still communicate in the meantime.
And this is an outgrowth of the similar type of job embedded professional development that we began a few years ago at the elementary level with our lab room, classroom lab sites. So this really will now encompass all of our K to twelve educators, you know, with the infusion of this, inclusion of this for the secondary level this year.
And articulation between the buildings and between grade levels is really important, so. Okay, sixth graders, in an effort to better meet the needs of the sixth-grade students, the administration has collected feedback from students and teachers of the sixth-grade study skills course. Right now, it's an elective. They surveyed these students, and the students, based on this feedback, the students would like the revamped course to focus on developing time management skills, goal-setting skills, stress management, research skills, annotating and summarizing, public speaking, and digital citizenship. Students also want to learn how to use digital tools for organizational purposes, such as Google Drive and Google Calendar. The curriculum will be written by one teacher from each middle school and supervised by the supervisor of digital media arts and technology, and they'll begin writing the curriculum the week of February eighteenth. Okay. Mr. Dunn already mentioned this, but we'll, there'll be a presentation. The supervisor of elementary curriculum and instruction, along with one of the reading development teachers and one math specialist, they'll be presenting the tiered intervention program for literacy and math to the Middletown Friends of Diverse Learners, and this program will be April sixteenth at six-thirty at High School North. Anything you want to add there? I know Mr. Dunn already mentioned that one. This one's for you, Leah. Financial literacy manding for middle school. So, as we know, the legislation amended by the state legislature requires that budgeting, savings, credit, debt, insurance, investment, and other issues associated with personal financial responsibility be taught at the middle school level, effective two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty school year. So, we are now awaiting more materials from the Commissioner of Education, who's going to provide the school district with some sample materials and resources that may be used to support the implementation of the financial literacy requirement. So, once those materials, once that information comes to us, then, I guess.
And we're looking for natural ways to integrate this new requirement. We're currently undergoing a rewrite of our middle school social studies curriculum, so we are looking for ways to possibly integrate these concepts into those grade-level specific curriculum. We also know that with our revamping and our launch of our new middle school schedule, there were new electives, such as our, such as our seventh grade personal business, personal finance elective, so we're looking for ways to also tie these concepts into that course.
Okay, and finally, the AP program changes. Recently, after reviewing AP student enrollment, current course options, and the new college board policies and procedures, the administrators began to look at possible changes regarding the AP courses. There have been some changes from the college board. The college board will be requiring students to register now in October for AP exams, starting in the fall, rather than in the spring, as they've previously done. We, it was also read that AP World History is a great opportunity for motivated students to be taking AP courses next year as freshmen. It's also noted that the syllabus has been revised by the college board. It's now considered modern history as opposed to ancient world history. The other course that's suggested is AP Human Geography. Yeah, AP Human Geography for freshmen or sophomore students. A parent presentation was giving, given in the beginning of January to let parents know all about this program, and one of the points that was made during the presentation was the expectation of all students to take the AP test at the end of the year if they're enrolled in an AP course. And this expectation has been included in the district's high school course selection guide in the past. After that, there were student meetings held at both High School North and South, two meetings at each school with central office and building administrators. Old schools advertised the meetings, and approximately twenty students at each school attended the sessions. They, the administrators met with the students, and some students felt, you know, we got a lot of feedback, some students felt that they should have a choice whether or not to take the exam, and other students felt that they should take the AP exam. During these student meetings, the administrators clarified all the misunderstandings, one of which is that colleges and universities don't accept these AP credits. And I'm not sure if it's on the website or not, but are there links to some of the colleges?
We're going to add that link to better inform the community, because we really want to stress the fact that when you do the college board search for universities and colleges who accept AP credit, the vast majority come up as accepting. If they don't accept, most who don't will allow at least you to advance a level in your coursework in the college, so you can skip entry-level courses with successful scores on an AP exam.
Right. Which is a big money saver. So, anyway, so based on the research and the feedback from the student, the recommendation now is that next year's ninth and tenth graders who are pursuing college credit, either through AP test prep or dual enrollment courses, they'll receive college wait or AP wait for an AP or dual enrollment. Yeah, AP Human Geography for freshmen or sophomore students. A parent presentation was given in the beginning of January to let parents know all about this program. And one of the points that was made during the presentation was the expectation of all students to take the AP test at the end of the year if they're enrolled in an AP course. And this expectation has been included in the district's high school course selection guide in the past. After that, there were student meetings held at both High School North and South, two meetings at each school with central office and building administrators. Old schools advertised the meetings and approximately twenty students at each school attended the sessions. They, the administrators met with the students and some students felt, you know, we got a lot of feedback, some students felt that they should have a choice whether or not to take the exam and other students felt that they should take the AP exam. During these student meetings, the administrators clarified all the misunderstandings, one of which is that colleges and universities don't accept these AP credits. And I'm not sure if it's on the website or not, but are there links to some of the colleges?
We're going to add that link to better inform the community because we really want to stress the fact that when you do the college board search for universities and colleges who accept AP credit, the vast majority come up as accepting. If they don't accept, most who don't will allow at least you to advance a level in your coursework in the college, so you can skip entry level courses with successful scores on an AP exam.
Which is a big money saver. So, anyway, so based on the research and the feedback from the student, the recommendation now is that next year's ninth and tenth graders who are pursuing college credit either through AP test prep or dual enrollment courses, they'll receive college weight or AP weight for an AP or dual enrollment course. If they don't take the AP exam, honors weight will be applied since a student wouldn't be meeting the full requirements of the course. However, for next year's eleventh and twelfth graders, they're basically being grandfathered in, so they can make that decision regardless of weight, whether or not to take the test. And even if they, am I correct?
Yes, the one point of feedback that we received from hosting the, basically the listening sessions, and they were really great. We wanted to stress, I know Mrs. O'Hagan and Mrs. Crusoe especially reminded me that we should stress that the students were very well-prepared, very respectful, and very willing to engage in conversation to come up with a compromise because in spite of whatever position, wherever they lied on the topic, whether they were for requiring the exams or not, you know, allowing the students to make that choice on their own, they all acknowledged that there was probably some sort of change that needed to happen. And one of the things in listening to them was that even for our current eleventh and twelfth graders, we have dual enrollment courses that allow students to pursue college credit that are apart from seeking AP credit, you know, or it could be the same course, it's just that I choose to do it through dual enrollment versus AP. And we weren't weighting them equally. So even for next year's eleventh and twelfth graders, what we're looking to do is change that process. So, really, the only change for eleventh and twelfth graders next year is that if they are pursuing college credit via a dual enrollment opportunity, then they will also receive college weight or AP weight for that course.
Right, so, again, just to clarify, current, next year's eleventh and twelfth graders will be able to decide and then get the AP weight.
For dual enrollment.
Right, for dual enrollment.
That's the added feature.
Yes, and ninth and tenth graders, incoming ninth and tenth graders are expected to take the AP exam at the end in order to have the weight, the AP weight. And finally, one thing I wanted to mention is that students who, or families who are unable to pay for the cost of testing, the district is willing to pay and all the children need to do, or parents need to do is to contact the school guidance counselor.
And those considerations will be, you know, reviewed and...
Great.
Anything else that I can say?
No, you don't have to.
Okay, yeah, well, thanks.
There was a lot of information, I was really trying hard to condense all of it, so.
It was a fruitful meeting.
It was, it was.
It was really cool. Thanks. And Mr. Jaimo, we're working on a new name for the study skills.
We're working on a new name for the study skills curriculum and that type of task that happens.
Yeah, that's Mr. Jaimo's job.
Yep. Thank you. Any questions? I know that there's some additional field trip destinations on the agenda and of course our, we usually have voting items pertaining to professional development. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to facilities and finance. We're going to include the strategic plan in this as well.
Yeah, they're on the CMA and then Amy has a couple of things that we need to discuss in the meeting that are on the committee agenda. So, we met on February seventh to talk about finance and facilities. The first, the first topic was basically the format of the budget meetings this year for the 2019-2020 budget. We're going to have public meetings. We proposed having meetings on February twentieth and March seventh, towards the twenty-fifth. Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth and March seventh. The location will be here at North. Well, I just mentioned two meetings. The meetings will start for the public at seven o'clock and go to nine o'clock. The way it will work is that seven to eight-thirty will be the presentation and the board discussing. And then eight-thirty to nine will be public comment. So the public comment will be at the end of those meetings. There'll be part one and part two, so there'll be different topics discussed. I don't think, I think we have a general idea of which topics will come first and second. I think, you know, you have health plans, you have personnel, you have various different pieces. We'll, I guess we'll be announcing those when we announce the meeting, the topics we discuss in each one. Video won't be available for these meetings. And as part of these meetings, we usually have department heads come in and they'll be limited to ten minutes to talk about, you know, your facilities head or curriculum, talk about various different pieces. So you'll see that some asks that are coming across. In addition, we'll also present, we also discussed the NCAA contract, the financial impacts. It's still tentative, I believe. I don't know if it will be ratified by the time the budget discussion's out. I don't know how that works in a public meeting, but we will talk about the various contracts that have been agreed upon with the various bargaining units, including the teachers and, you know, personnel and salary costs are a big part of our budget. That will be part of the presentations. In addition, we're also presented with an attempt to look at costs in a different, in sort of a more meaningful metric, in particular by schools, elementary schools, incorporating the state's 2014 adequacy formula. That will also be part of the presentation, talk about what it looks like by school. There's certain pieces that haven't been totally completed, like the facilities cost, like the utilities, things like that, but looking at teachers, looking at cost, looking how much the state estimates per teacher and what their recommendations are. We talked about capital expenditures over the last five years by each building. The next step would be to look at what the proposals are for the next three years for each building. We talked about state aid update. The governor's address, I guess, has been pushed back a week to March fifth. After his meeting, state aid information is usually provided for you hours and... So that'll be March seventh, which will be our second meeting. Now, the delay, we don't know what that means per se, but we can estimate that's not necessarily a positive impact for us. Most likely, at best, that will be a no impact to us. It's unclear what the delay is for. Usually, it's not to allocate us more money. So we'll have to sort of wait and see how that pans out. In addition, the administration did a one pager on what their, you know, what generally we have state aid reductions and what our shortfall will be looking at, you know, our two percent cap, looking at our bank cap. So that one pager will likely be part of our presentation in terms of what the shortfall looks like across the district and what the proposals will be. I won't go into details on that, the entire board hasn't even seen that, so that'll be part of our meetings for the public to witness. You'll see how the magic happens. So, I mean, there was various different pieces and we talked about different things. That will... And I can just tell you that's a very low number, under half a million dollars, which is, as you can imagine, you know, South School Paul Field cost a million dollars, so it shows you where we are in the world. We also briefly talked about, not too much, but, you know, maybe having walkthroughs of different facilities because part of the conversations usually come down to what the needs of the buildings are. That's always hard to arrange, we didn't talk about it very long. And another agenda item that we didn't get to was security in terms of classroom officers. We didn't get, we didn't discuss that at all in terms of, that discussion was around when we talked about that, probably part of the legislative process is security. So that was the finance facilities meeting. I'm not sure if any other members had any other takeaways from that meeting that probably was less of a part of discussing the budget public.
Pleasure.
I thought it was very positive. I think that the public will have a chance to, I don't want to say get educated, but get a fuller understanding of the financial picture of the district as opposed to the picture that kind of gets painted over the course of the year. They'll actually get to see, you know, what it is that we're going to be grappling with. So this is good, I'm really happy that we're going this way.
And, well, one thing we did mention is that we have two meetings, but that could also become free. Also, on February seventh, we had a strategic planning committee meeting. Topics were very high level. We want to talk about, you know, the prior, prior process, which was 2015 through 2020, what we're in right now. We discussed the pros and cons, in particular, the use of the school board's liaison as a facilitator. The primary points that I took away from the conversation was that, first thing is to emphasize that strategic planning and long-range planning are not synonymous. Long-range planning is definitely part, an important part of strategic planning, but there are other topics such as like student success, various other things. You can look at online and you can see what, you know, the objectives were and what the different categories were. You know, we felt that, you know, the folks that participated in the last process felt that there was a tight timeline between preparing what they call the state of... Or are there certain things that the public, you know, parents, taxpayers, board, administration want to talk about? So I think it's going to be very, honestly, I think there's going to be a lean on, you know, one of the items we talked about, the role of PEC. You know, spend a lot of time with PEC. You know, they, you know, there's minutes, they send the information back. Hopefully, we can use them, hopefully we can work with them to, you know, the first, the first thing would be to, you know, in March, the next meeting, we'll talk about, you know, what was discussed here and the best way to, you know, get that information out and remind, maybe PEC can go back, remind parents where the current plan is, where the current documents are located, start talking amongst themselves, maybe in the PTA, PTO, PFA meetings. Start thinking about people, people start thinking about the volunteers, if they want to volunteer for things. And sort of on their own, sort of maybe each school, each building can kind of get a vibe of what they want to do. That's just the beginning process. And we'll see how that goes. You know, we'll also figure out the best way to get surveys done. Sort of collect ideas across the district of the size is harder than it sounds. And also, we'll solicit feedback from PEC. Maybe PEC can go back to schools and find out, you know, what concerns them at their schools and the best way to sort of collect that information back. And I think the one thing that we, you know, we did last time is we had to start from almost scratch, you know, and we talked about the state and the community, the state and the schools, that's great. I think that we can now look at, okay, what's changed over the last five years? I don't think we need to go back to those type of, necessarily those documents, but start with the plan that we have. What do people think about that? Hopefully, people can start thinking about that and, you know, sort of thinking about what they would, how they would approach the things they want to discuss. That's all we really talked about. Other than that, I think the board just has to have an agreement of what the timeframe looks like and also too, whether we, you know, about the facility. I don't know if we want to decide that tonight or...
We need an experienced strategic plan facilitator.
Someone who can handle these types of things. When you collect the information, you come up with, yeah, there's probably lots of results.
But I think those are really different portions. I think that two things, just to add a little more color to the discussion that we had, it's absolutely true that we're going to need the involvement of PEC. I think the other thing that came up in the discussion was the involvement of not just the regular faces that we see out here, but representatives of the community as a whole. So there's a, you know, with seventy thousand. You know, so we've got, you know, a lot of taxpayers who have, who, everybody who pays taxes has a vested interest in the school district. We need to communicate that out, we need to look for avenues to get that message out, to get them into the process. That's going to be a challenge, I think, but I think it's, Middletown tends to step up around things like that, so I'm hoping that that'll happen. And then just to, just to throw my support behind the idea of a third-party facilitator, I just think, you know, I think you nailed it, that, you know, Middletown has some complexities and we have an approach to it, educational philosophy of neighborhood schools that the community has thrown its weight behind in the past and that has driven our priorities, I think, as a school district. We have a large, diverse community and we need to have somebody who can take the different voices that are going to be in these meetings and, you know, sort of sift through the noise to find where the real priorities are. I think, you know, with school boards, I think the beautiful school boards are capable, but they're generalists and we need a specialist, is my feeling, so that's, that's...
I think that's a good point of one, do we get, how do we get other taxpayers? Like people who've been in town, if kids have been out of school for a long time, people who go to private school, people that don't even have kids. You know, I think there are other impacts in certain categories, in certain topics they're going to want to discuss. Also too, I want to talk about, you know, all the topics of curriculum. Be interesting to see what some of the private school people think or, and things of that nature. But I think you're right, I think it's definitely going to be strong when someone can handle the complexities of town.
Yeah, I agree that we need a facilitator as well and I have to commend Mr. Little on the meetings. They were very efficient and very productive and I love that this plan wants to use as many people in the public that we can. And I think I'm very optimistic about this plan. Yeah? Yeah?
So do you want to talk about the voting agenda items for facilities?
There are a couple of other things, like Mr. Little said, that weren't covered in committee. We will be having our auditor from Pullman and Franyay at the voting meeting in two weeks to present our 2017, 2018 financial statements. There has been a bit of a delay because of some holdups in getting information from the state that we needed for disclosures. So normally, we would be doing this in the December, January timeframe, but because of those holdups and footnotes and they weren't able to issue their opinion, we are now just doing it in February. But we have gone over a draft, they had an exit conference with Dr. George and myself and others from the business office. There are no issues to report, and it will be a presentation basically upon, you know, the procedures that they perform and what the changes are in the financial statements of the district from year to year. So that will be on the 27th. We also have a approval of non-public security entitlements. We did already do this once this year, but as some of you are probably aware, Governor Murphy did increase the allocations for non-public schools for security, and so we are now approving a second allocation for them. He basically doubled the amount per student from $75 to $150. So being the public school district, we administer those funds for the non-public schools within our district, so we have to approve those entitlements that we then administer for those non-public schools. We also have on the agenda a contract with Critical Response Group, we've been working on this for a while. This is a contract that's being funded from our safety grant that we get from New Jersey School Boards. It's basically a grant that we get from them for participating in their insurance group, you know, the self-funding group that we participate in for our liability insurance. But it's something that's being supported by the county office of the Department of Ed, and Monmouth County Sheriff's Office has also implemented this program where districts can get overlays and surveys of their campuses, the buildings and the grounds. And we will be doing that for all 17 buildings, and then that will be able to be uploaded to a server at the county level, so not only the local law enforcement, but county law enforcement will be able to access that in a time of a critical crisis, and it will assist that. So, I don't know, Mrs. Walker, do you want to add to that, or, you know, I mean, Mrs. Walker and John McGuire and Dr. George and all of us have been working on implementing this initiative for the district, and we've been able to fund it through our security grant from the New Jersey School Board, so we're happy about that.
I think that's also, who, who would actually absolutely be able to see if that was like a demo of some sort, or is that like private?
Well, I don't know that we would want to be publicizing those overlays. I mean, maybe, maybe for the board, we can see the overlays, but it's not something we would present in a public meeting.
No, I just mean like an example, but, you know, not many specifics, but it'd be interesting to see, because it seems like a pretty cool tool.
Right, and it is.
Pretty effective, too.
And I've seen demonstrations of it.
Yeah, demonstration.
In meetings, and, you know, and they can pinpoint where people are, and it really helps when you're having, you know, a situation like that, you know, getting people who aren't familiar with your buildings and your campuses to where they need to be. So that's all we have under, the one other thing I wanted to just bring to the board's attention, it's not on the agenda, but, you know, we do have regular facilities meetings with all of our staff and so forth, and we just wanted to make you aware that, you know, we have had, with all of the rain and condensation and precipitation and all that that we've had over the last several months, we have had, we've been battling this year more than other years, some leaks in various buildings, and not, not all roof leaks, some of them are masonry leaks, there's just different instances that we, we are now addressing. But we just wanted to let you know that at High School South, Thompson, High School North, Fairview Bay, Bay Shore, Port Monmouth and Navisink, we're addressing leaks of different types, and some of them are roof leaks, some of them are masonry, wall leaks. We are, I just wanted to make the board aware that our maintenance department is on it, we are addressing these things, but, you know, this year more than other years, just because of the amount of rain and moisture that's been out there, we are experiencing a little bit of an elevated level of that, but we are working on that. And actually, at Thompson, we had to remove some of the solar panels to fix the roof leak, they will be going back on, but it's just an ongoing thing, it's, it's more than usual this year, but just wanted to make you aware, in case you see or hear of something related to that. That's all.
Okay, and let's move on to policy.
We just have five policies on the agenda for first readings, which would mean that they would be readings, no action, revisions that are being made. The policies that are on here are all mandatory, except for the last one, which is on memorials. They are all revisions of current policies that we have, you know, they've been posted for the board to review, and the revisions have been noted.
I think, I think they are pretty interesting. I know you can add, because I was gonna say, are.
I mean, I wasn't gonna go through them step by step, if you have any questions.
There was just a couple of things, I mean, if you guys are in line, but I think that the one for health and physical education, I think this is the one where it talks about daily recess of being at least 20 minutes, talks about how much, you know, the board, that the Board of Education must provide two and a half hours of health, you know, and physical education, and talks about if recess can't be counted against that. So look, the folks that were interested in that concept, in that policy, 2422, it also talks about students can't be denied access, or cannot be denied recess more than twice per week. So I think a lot of folks are interested in that, it's just a highlight, I think. I might read if I'm reading that right, is there a bold, like, difference in changes?
And that's based on the new recess law that's going to affect?
Right, yep, so people are probably gonna want to read that. I also had a question about the educational program evaluation. It says that superintendent, so use multiple, more than two sources of data to evaluate the effectiveness of programs initiatives. And we're talking about student testing, more student testing, like, the changes to that policy is the stuff we already do? We're talking about student testing or other ways that the district will show that they're meeting their educational goals? Because I know we talked about how to measure educational goals outside of student testing.
Yeah, so it's the multiple measures of student achievement that we collect naturally as a district, so it's data sources such as practice and panel, reading inventories, DRA, the math quarterlies at the elementary level, at the middle school level, quarterlies, i-ready assessments that we do for language arts at the high school level, our quarterlies, final, you know, finals, including state standardized assessments. So basically, what the policy is saying is that we must demonstrate that we are utilizing or reviewing and using the results of at least two or three, actually, it's three or more, because it has to be more than two, forms of data to weigh and analyze our student achievement. And we have already been doing that, and thanks to the board, a few years ago, when you supported our adoption of Linkit, which is our online student data warehouse, that that information has been more accessible to teachers to use in real time, those multiple measures in formulating their daily lesson plans and personalized learning goals.
So no, no new testing, it's just, is it presenting it?
It's, it's basically making sure that every district is basically doing what we're doing, which is using multiple forms of data.
So our policy's just updating the changing, is it still already doing no tests?
Nope.
And doing that on a basis that it's both informative or, you know, or subjective or?
Yep.
And just a, just an overall question or, I guess, or comment on the health and PE policy, it looks like what the revisions do is actually make it less prescriptive as to how the mandates should be carried out, and, you know, they've just canceled out a lot of, you should do this, you should do that, it's just, you have to teach us, you have to teach us, and we're given up to us to, to handle that, is that, is my understanding there?
Correct, and that's something that the elementary principals have been meeting with central office administrators, or at least the last two months, to prepare for the adoption of that new law and those new requirements and mandates for September. We're working on a plan to make sure that our schedule, our elementary schedule and the way that we're utilizing staff and scheduling students for health and physical education instruction, character education is a big part of that, so social, emotional learning, as well as recess, will be met, those mandates.
Will we get a, will we get a chance to see what the curriculums are? Because I'm, I'm just looking through, I'm looking at numbers 12 and 13, number 12 is sexual assault prevention, number 13 is the stress abstinence, otherwise known as the Prevention Act of 1999. So if we're gonna make revisions to those, will we be able to see what those revisions are?
Yeah, some of these revisions, we've already kind of been ahead of, we've been holding in, but we will certainly, in May, we usually do, Mrs. Caruso and Mrs. O'Heaven will bring the directors and supervisors here to talk about any major changes to curriculum, we will certainly highlight that at that time.
Very cool, please. And I, I think it's also adding something about, talking about setting out sexually explicit.
Yes, social media.
Yeah, that, that's new, or we've been already?
Um, I believe that that was something that we were already infusing into our curriculum.
This project, plus they do, that they talk about, to the parents, it's all, so that's something that we've already been doing, because I think that's probably important for kids to understand.
Yes.
What the implications are.
Yep.
Consequences are for that.
Yep.
Then my favorite policy, I don't understand this commercial driver's license calling people employees and why the district would give drug tests to people, and why we would also give alcohol tests and sort of allow someone to go back with a 0.02. I don't, I think there's, some of what's in here, it's a very long document, but it redefines drivers, calls them employees, anyone who has a CBL, it's the, I think it's a 4219. I'm not understanding, is the district now calling bus drivers, or is this for facilities people, employees? Are we going to give drug and alcohol tests? Because some of this stuff's like, someone goes back to, they have a 0.04.
Well, just, just to clarify, because we do not employ our bus drivers. This extends to the employees of our contracted service providers.
Okay.
Who are not our employees. And the way our bids are set up, we have specifications in our bid specs that require that we get certifications from these contracted service providers, that they are testing and providing, you know, for this, these requirements, and they will certify back to us if they are doing that. We don't get the results, we get the certifications from the certified, from the contracted providers that they're doing this, these requirements. So this, these updates are all just to clarify some of the language and some of the changes in the statutes and codes that apply.
You know, for example, like this one about alcohol, it's like, the person will be reinstated if they have less than a 0.02 in their blood strat. I mean, the district does not, you know, it's sort of like, you're not required to let them go back to what they're calling a safety-sensitive position, I mean, you know, how about, yeah, no alcohol, like, you know, in other words, some of the, I know the state, but some of the, you know, it's here, 0.02, 0.04, what are we talking about here? And that's like, if you're drinking, like, it's that person was just drinking a few hours ago, right? So, you know, I know there's concern about, you know, the amount of bus drivers have CBL, but I feel like this is sort of, can I read this thing? Like, I mean, some of the bars, like, I don't know, low. Holy small.
I mean, again, yeah, this is just to be in compliance with what this is.
I mean, can we make it stricter?
Yes, we can. Oops, yes, we can.
Yes, this is minimum. It's the minimum, you can't go any lower, you can't make it, you can make it sound, you can't drink it.
The person was not like alcohol, but they weren't really drunk, I mean, you know, I'm just, I mean, right, because if, if, if people love a grievance, I mean, if you go through this, it's gonna be a cold response. We're not letting somebody back in a hospital. So maybe we can pick about, maybe come over, or just pick about, maybe we can make some zero dollars. So it's like a recommendation to the policy. I'm gonna ask him, I mean, I'm not, you know, a...
It would be, it would be a recommendation to the policy.
I'm just saying, you know, we would have, I mean, of course, it's up to the board to change these, or changes, I'm, I'm just saying, anything over and above what the state is providing, obviously, we have to push that out to our contractors and see if they are...
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, in terms of what would be in that P then with who are we contracting with?
Well, we would have to tell them that this would be a part of our specs, and actually, you know, there are a variety of, or there's many contracts that we don't put out to bid each year, that we put out to bid if we need to, some contracts we just renew, so anything that would be substantially different from what the state's requiring, you know, depending upon how much of a change that is, it might require us to go back out to bid instead of renewing our contract.
Right. Okay, so we'll ask the policy committee to look over P4219.
Again, is this just, is this also for facilities, employees who have CBLs? Do the lines as everyone says?
Right, but our, we don't have any vehicles that require a CBL, so no, this is really just gonna be targeted to our contracted bus drivers.
Okay.
All right, any more questions on policy?
Well, before, before we move on from that, if we are going to make any changes, I mean, we are in the process right now of looking at renewing routes and putting bids out, you know, in the next, I would say, eight weeks. So if we're gonna be requiring anything more stringent than what's here, we're gonna have to let them know, and you'll have to let us know, and we'll have to possibly redo our bids depending upon what the changes are, and that, that could be a, you know, substantial undertaking.
Well, I mean, for me, I mean, you know, if the policy committee, recommendations for, if I read, I read this, I'm parent, I, but, you know, what's going on, right? You know, some of these controlled substance tests within the last six months, I've already failed to protest this, it's a long, it's a time.
So any, can we have till February 27th, till our voting meeting, to go through this and maybe go on adding or changing?
Right, and this, this would only be a first reading, you know, this month, so it really wouldn't be, the changes wouldn't be approved until March. But I'm only advising the board, if we're looking to implement anything that would be substantially different than state regulation, you know, we would have to get that out to our contractors, and it may impact our contracts for next year, which we would need to know as soon as possible.
Okay. Okay, can we move on to student activities? Nothing? Okay. And so we're moving on to our shared services report.
So we had a shared services meeting this past Monday with the township. It was a very fast meeting, which was good. I'm gonna go over some of the highlights on the agenda. There were five agenda items brought, that were agreed on by, by the parties. First, had to do with the sharing of Board of, Board of Education information in Middletown Minutes, those, that's a document that's published by the township. In general, the township is just concerned that if they allow the BOE a regular spot in the Middletown Minutes, and everybody's gonna want a regular spot in the Middletown Minutes. So we did come up with three potential compromises. First would be periodic spots, we have a major announcement. Second, to look into reinstating the high school news broadcast to be broadcast on Middletown TV. I didn't even know that we still had Middletown TV, so there was still a cable channel for the township. And finally, working with the township to put a link to the Board of Ed website on the Middletown Minutes page, which I think is, it's a good, these are all good compromises. We talked, the only thing we really talked about at length was the township's plan for new athletic fields. Again, this is in the week of the Stevenson's Park issued from last year. So the township has met with the two largest travel soccer clubs to discuss their needs based on US Soccer Regulation field sizes. So a soccer field is not just a soccer field, there are little soccer fields, medium-sized soccer fields, and large soccer fields, and depending on the demand for those soccer fields, it sort of dictates what sort of space might be available to handle some quantity of those fields, plus the requisite parking and facilities required to handle the people than it would be at those soccer games. There is a trend towards smaller fields, and having smaller fields towards youth teams, so there are more youth teams, and there are fewer, let's call them big kid teams. So any, any potential site that is gonna require an engineering review before we progress so far, we know that any sites that have been identified with the township may have things like drainage concerns, parking concerns, so all of that has to be looked over. And once we have identified those, we would meet with residents, the township and the Board of Ed, if it's to be a Board of Ed facility that would be considered for renovation. The grant application to fund such a project is due in September of 2019, so we do have motivation to continue progressing. It does seem like it's six months away, however, those six months will go very quickly, especially if we want to involve the township, the residents, in the process. So it was a very productive meeting, and we feel the township's being very transparent with us, on what they want to achieve, we're happy to help out. Third item was talking about police officer administration fees being charged to the Board of Ed. Again, this is a surcharge applied whenever we get a police officer for an activity at the schools, we have an hourly rate, and then there's an administrative fee, it's kind of like Ticketmaster, except it's on every hour. So this is, the township is considering some sort of relief on this fee, it's still under consideration, they're having a budget meeting with the police department next week, or more at the next meeting, but they at the next meeting, but they are amenable to this, which is helpful. The township brought up that variable message signs are governed by ordinance. We have variable message signs outside of many of our schools. Multicolor displays and other distractions are prohibited by ordinance. So an example, for anybody that lives over near high school south, they have a beautiful banner with an eagle and a waving flag and a hole of the eagles thing. That's actually illegal. So the Board of Education has promised to meet with building level personnel to bring the use of those signs back in compliance with the ordinance. And the township did remind us that that ordinance and our adherence to that ordinance is what keeps huge message signs off of Route 35 and Route 36. So I think everybody just wanted to look nice.
On that, when I saw that on there, that was, that was a, I don't know, when I, last time I was on PEC as a resident, they have a big topic for the South PFA.
Yes.
Right, and they talked to the mayor at the time and they were told there's an ordinance, you know, we kind of have to follow it. So they, that was a big deal. So I mean, there's gonna be some. I remember that was like a topic like every, every month.
The rehashing of that topic will be probably the next PFA meeting.
Okay, just so for you to know, at those PEC meetings, it was like a big topic for the PFA president at the time.
I would expect it to come up again. I do think that the compelling argument is, and Mr. Fiore and Mr. Perry were pretty clear, that the reason that a developer or a billboard owner can't come in here and challenge the township to say, well, if everybody's not following the ordinance, it's useless, therefore it should get thrown out. We all have to follow the ordinance and then we don't have huge displays like they have over at Home Dell, by Home Dell Town Center.
Well, I think last time, last time the argument was more about CBL. So it's a different argument. So I'm just, I'm just warning.
It's a, it's a different argument. Frank, I would find this more compelling, the, in the consistent enforcement of the ordinance argument was more compelling.
He also did mention that.
He did mention safety.
Yeah, he did.
About distracting drivers. I mean, both were discussed.
Sorry. Two more, three more items, I'm sorry. Three more items. We talked a little bit about a pool of resources that we have between the township and the Board of Education to support vehicle maintenance, plumbing and electrical support. The township has vehicle maintenance folks. We have plumbing and electrical support folks on our payroll. And so we do share resources. However, both pools of resources are experiencing shortages. And so we did commit to working together to find better ways to pool these resources going forward. Nothing concrete has been decided on, but this is something that Amy, you and Mr. Merkin talked to and we've been working with on a go forward basis to try and solve. The township then brought five additional items. They were mostly just points of note. I want to bring two of them up. One was around recycling and sustainability. The township will be, will be beginning an education program on this topic. This actually came up at our prior shared services meeting. Recycling in the township, the people who take our recyclables have told us that we have too high of a level of contamination. That means, you know, things that can't be recycled, thrown in with the recycling. The number they're looking for is around 10% contamination, more like 35% contamination. What the township would like to do is work with the Board of Education to bring recycling awareness into schools. Because first graders and second graders are excellent recycling police. And so we're certainly happy to assist them with that. Finally, Mr. Perry, Mayor Perry advised us of something called the Mayor's Wellness Campaign, which is gonna be an ongoing project that he's spearheading. It'll be a multi-month township-wide campaign that will culminate at the Hallow Blue this coming year, this year. And the idea will be that every month there'll be a different activity that people can participate in. The headline event will be the Mayor's 5K on the 19th of October. So that is the update.
Great job.
Just one question. You said they're gonna put the BOE link on their website?
On the Middletown Minutes page.
Right, so bottom.
Oh, of the, of the.
People could easily click on.
Right. And the, one other thing about the implications is if we ever ask them, you know, they send out, when taxes come out, they send out that little form saying, here's where your taxes are going. You know, we talked about, you know, the front side talks about the municipal taxes, that, you know, if we could get the backside, I think it's like a little card or paper and say, hey, 63% goes to schools, you don't even send any details on it. And they talk a lot about, I know it's their sort of distribution, but, you know, it sort of leaves the story kind of empty for folks that don't, you know, attend our meetings. Maybe we can ask them when they send that out, if we can put that, something a little on the back, just, hey, well, yeah, 63%, and just say, listen, this is where it's going.
We could, we could certainly.
Because I get our story out to taxpayers, right? We're always trying to get people, on people, kids in school. And they see that and they say, oh my God, 63 cents. Let's go find Dr. George and find out why that's going on. But maybe they, they see the details in there and maybe a link or something they can kind of click on. They can say, oh, I'm gonna go there and see what the schools are doing.
I think, me personally, I think that that's a, I think it's something we can talk about. I think that it's also a double edged sword. I think we'll learn a bit more when we go into our budget meetings because even if we break down on a postcard, where that money goes and the good things that it funds. There's always gonna be somebody who's gonna try and use that as cudgel against us.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, if they give us that space, we'll have to really make it considerate thoughtful about how we use it.
Absolutely.
But it's worth, it's worth asking for.
So at least we can add a link, I mean, it goes to the board's documents that you can see, okay, didn't know the school was doing.
Or personalized invitation.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We'll bring that up at the next shared services meeting. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to personnel. Did that already? Okay, so moving on to old business. Okay, moving on to new business. The Special Services Committee has discussed with the board, and it's the consensus of this board, to move the committee meetings, the Special Services Committee meetings back to a committee of the whole. Because we feel like it's redundant, the information that we're getting in the committee meetings to what we're getting in our closed session meetings as a whole board. So we're going to be, you know, Mrs. Wright will still be the liaison to the friends of different learners. But as far as a committee of the whole meeting, that's where the special services will take place. We won't have our once a month committee meeting on that topic any longer. I have here Through Our Eyes. It's a Middletown Schools art exhibit. It's March 1st through 31st, and it's at the Middletown Art Center. And there's a reception on March 5th, 2019, 6:30 to 7:30. And I just got a letter from the mayor that, I'll read it. "The New Jersey State League of Municipalities and I have an excellent scholarship opportunity for high school juniors and seniors from the township of Middletown. We have teamed up to offer three $1,000 scholarships through the Lewis Bay's The Second Future Municipal Leaders Scholarship Competition. This statewide scholarship competition centers on the theme, "What My Municipal Government Does Best," and seeks to advance the virtues of elected and volunteer members of the municipal government. Many of the elected officials and appointed board members serve the township of Middletown with little to no compensation. It is their altruistic desire to serve their community which compels them to public service. These officials, along with a caterer of dedicated professionals, are guardians of our hometown comforts and security. They serve us year round and yet are hardly noticed. They give of their time and talents to help plan our community and preserve our way of life. The scholarship competition will help rectify that while encouraging our future municipal leaders. Full details of the application process and contest are attached here. Can also be filled out online at middletownnewjersey.org. You can email your application and your essay to mayorsoffice@middletownnewjersey.org, or you can mail it to the mayor's office, 1 Kings Highway. Let's see. So you complete the essay, you return to the mayor's office. The mayor or designated committee will select one semifinalist from your municipality. All entrants will receive a certificate of participation from the mayor's office. And the winner from each municipality will be designated as a state semifinalist. They will have their essay and application reviewed by the Scholarship Committee of the New Jersey State League of Municipalities. All state semifinalists will receive a certificate attesting to their status as state semifinalist. The Scholarship Committee will select 15 finalists and three winners. And the 15 finalists will each be awarded finalist certificates. The three winners will each be awarded $1,000 by their mayor at a hometown ceremony. And the winner's essays will be featured in the New Jersey Municipalities Magazine. So let's try to get the word out to all of our juniors, juniors and seniors in Middletown about this. Yeah, great. Wonderful. It's a great opportunity for the kids, yes. All right, anybody else have any new business?
Just one thing. I just wanted to say, so as part of our adopted school program for AVOE, Friday night I got to attend their Valentine's Day dance. And my hats off to the PTA for putting on another great event for the kids. My first grader actually thought it was amazing and awesome. And it was probably the easiest thing to get him dressed for in a very quick manner. If only we had that cooperation every morning, that would be awesome. And I'm really looking forward to attending their gift basket auction on March 8th. I think it's gonna be another great event.
Wonderful. Anybody else? At this time, I'd like to open the mic to public comments. We do have a limit of 30 minutes, but there's not too many of you here, so I think we can give you five minutes each tonight.
Oh, wow.
I know. Well, I'm sorry.
The rules of, the rules of the board for. The, each state, each statement made by participant shall be limited to three minutes, but it is up to the board. If the board wants to extend it, you just need to take a vote.
We vote tonight, I'm sorry.
Oh, was it advertised as voting meeting? Was this meeting advertised as voting, taking action? Okay, so we have to stick to the.
Sorry, we'll hold on that on the 27th.
All right, so it's three minutes.
I'll talk fast. Hi, Rachel Kanalka. Just a couple of things, kind of based on what you guys talked about. First of all, thank you very much for making the budget meetings public. I think that's huge. I think people will be really willing to just listen and ask questions and kind of just make it a good collaborative process. I do have a question as to why they can't be recorded. I know you mentioned that, John. Is there like a legal reason? Am I allowed to ask that question?
I just, I think we, I think we decided that we wouldn't, you know, is there a big cost? I don't think so. I think we just said we weren't gonna go.
Okay. If a member of the public records it, is that a problem? Like, I can't go to one, and I'm bummed. So I'm trying to see if there's a way I can get access to it, but I might be able to have somebody take that.
What we can do, I'm sorry for interrupting, but to keep to your time, so that there's not a back and forth.
Okay, I'll keep going.
We'll answer after.
At the end, got it. Okay. So then my next thing is the strategic plan. I think, again, awesome. I think the way that you broke out the timeline seems very, it'll involve the public at the right times, but not rushing. I think it gives ample opportunity for people to get involved, who want to be involved. So I thought that that sounds great. And I do think in terms of reaching folks outside the parent set to really involve them, other taxpayers, I think leveraging Middletown Minutes, the Nixle Service, the Middletown Matters newsletter. I bet the township has a ton of ways to get to people who might otherwise not hear about it. So I think if you talk to them some more, like you guys already talked about, I think that would be helpful. The last thing is the big one. I wasn't mentioned in the shared services committee report, but at the last township committee meeting, the township committee approved basically the next step of allowing Toll Brothers to put in 400 units at Village 35. And I know it won't be imminent. That's gonna take a while to kind of get to the next phase and be built and all that. But has there been any discussion about the impact to the schools if you put 400 units there? As I understand it now, they'd be zoned for Fairview. I don't know if that would continue. As, I don't know how at capacity Fairview is. I just feel like there's a, that's a big elephant in the room, is not only that site, but any other future undeveloped sites and what the impact could be to the schools. I know there's the payment of taxes stuff that they sometimes negotiate into these things. Like, there's a lot. And I think it could really impact us down the road. And it's already, there's already some pain points in the district in terms of crowding. So I'm just curious what discussion has happened or what discussion will happen so that there's more of a kind of lockstep maneuver when it comes to these developments moving forward. That's it.
Does that complete your?
Yes, that completes everything. Thank you.
So what we'll do is we're gonna call for everybody and then we'll have responses at the end.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Cheryl. And this is now Santa Lucia. We're new to Middletown Township. So we've been here probably about.
I'm sorry, could you also state your last name, please?
Williams and Estebas. And we live on Park Avenue.
Okay.
Do it after.
Do it after.
That doesn't count.
So we're new to the Board of Ed meetings. This is our first. So we're not quite sure what we should and should not ask. But if anything we're asking, if you could just pull this aside and give us the information, we would appreciate it. I guess, I'm a little upset and nervous at the same time. As a parent, I have a daughter in Bay Shore Middle School. And I guess I just want to know, what steps should I be aware of in order to make sure that my child's discrimination concerns are addressed? What is the process, the procedure of the Board of Ed that you take regarding HIV incidents, harassment, intimidation, bullying? And are there any public information for me that I can look online to see stats for Bay Shore Middle School or Middletown Township and hold for their harassment, intimidation, bullying process? And what do you do to address this issue? So I'm at a loss because I'm not used to this. So I guess I'm asking for the steps that I need to take. I did appreciate you mentioning diversity and, you know, reaching out to the community. This community is very diverse. And I am a parent that has gotten involved. I've gotten my job involved recently. And we've reached out to Bay Shore Middle School. And I spoke into Mr. Serrano. And he's met with, has not met with yet, he's had a conference call with some people that I put him in touch with in order to bring more diversity awareness programs into the school. So I know that, you know, we don't want to mention anything specific, but I'm at a loss. So I just need to know what direction I need to go in because it's extremely upsetting. I feel like the situation my daughter is in right now is very toxic.
Well, thank you for your comments. I would refer you to the superintendent.
I have reached out to superintendent. He did reply on February 4th and advised me that Mr. Serrano would contact me, which he did. And everything he said ran a line, very general. It did not give me a good feeling. It didn't give me a good feeling that he had no direction as to what to do in order to deal with this situation that I had to jump in and give guidance. This is not the first incident. There's been over four or five incidents with my daughter. With the media, with kids committing suicide, I don't want that to be my daughter.
Okay, so if I could address two of your questions. The data as it relates to HIV, all HIV incidents, we actually post that every month as part of our, as, as part of our, that data's available as part of our, at our action meeting each month. So that'll be the first thing. The second thing, as it relates to the chain of command, the first step is defer you, defer you back to the building principal. We've done that and you're still not satisfied at this point. And that's fine. And the next step would be for discussion, we'll take your contact information, Mrs. Walker.
My position is that you, your, your authority is being commandeered and confiscated in this article. That's, that's an opinion, and it's not a absolute judgment earned by legal research or anything, no other kind of research. My second point is that the new law, is the new law commanding or mandating that middle and high schools, high schools teach the contributions of gay people to society, a mandate that requires funding? In other words, is this an un, another unfunded mandate? Oh, yeah, they'll give us book materials or DVDs, but would it, well, would it cost more teachers and more money to the taxpayers? So that's the two points about that article. This guy that wrote this, he's, it's not his business. The only thing of value is the first paragraph to me and the last paragraph. I'm not responsible for having any urging of the opinions in between those paragraphs. The second thing is a letter from the Asbury Park Press, both of these from the Asbury Park Press. May I have a minute just to...
I'm sorry, Leo, that's your time. Thank you. Anybody else?
Hey, I'm sorry, Mr. Rogers. Can I respond to one thing?
Sure.
Mr. Kostafi, I just want to bring up this article that you wrote up the headline on this. This is not an article, this is a column from the Asbury Park Press. It says, "Gay Virtue Mandate Bad Law." This is a column. This is an opinion piece, not just the middle part, but the first paragraph and the last paragraph. This is one man's opinion, and frankly, this opinion is garbage. In my opinion. In my opinion, maybe garbage, too. The law, as I understand it, mandates that the inclusion of LGBT citizens of this country be included in our curriculum. It doesn't mean that we have to hire teachers, it doesn't mean that we have to buy DVDs, it just means that instead of glossing over the contributions of people at Stonewall, of Harvey Milk, of Matthew Shepard, of people here in our state, that they're included, so that it's not just a bunch of white guys in the history book. So as one board member, I think this is a good law. It costs us $0, and it creates a more inclusive community. So I would hope that when opinion columns are brought and placed on our places here, that there's an understanding that this is one person's opinion. And it took me three seconds of hitting the Google to find news articles that laid out exactly what the laws are, and what the examples are. Stonewall, Alan Turing, people who did make contributions because or in spite of the fact that in society they were LGBT and oppressed. So I think this is a fantastic law, and I'm looking forward to the curriculum changes that will, hopefully, we don't have to make many. But again, this community could use a lot more inclusive inclusion and diversity, and I think that this is a good thing. So thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. DeFranco. All right, so let's answer some of Rachel's questions. The Village 35, that was already accounted for in our projections from TNM for, for budgeting. So that's not really a concern, and I'm sorry I didn't mention it, I meant to mention it before. So we're already prepared for that, and it is only 400. It could have been a lot more. And Mr. Fiore explained to me that they tried to make it as few as possible units.
Is there any projections to how many students those 400 units will yield for the district?
Mr. Fiore said something like 15, 30. Yeah, but it's just, this is all just speculation.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure, sorry. And the other question was, why are we not videotaping the budget meetings?
I think part of it is because they're going to be conversations. The budget will be presented, like it normally is, like to the public. What's that? Well, we have multiple meetings that historically have been, I guess, without, have been without the public, we're making them public. They're just conversations where they're presented with different pieces of materials. It's not a clean presentation, it's a conversation. So part of the answer was, the budget will be presented, like has been in the past, you know, multiple times, even in draft form. We felt that was more useful than someone looking at a video that would be very much not even a draft, it's like a conversation to create a draft. And it's going to be harder, harder to follow. We didn't, we didn't think, that's what we were talking about, because there will be, you know, regular workshop meetings, whatever, here's our draft budget, here's what we're looking at.
No, it's more, I guess, as a member of the public who can't attend the meeting, I would love to hear the discussion, because I think it helps.
That was just our, that was our reasoning at the time.
Okay.
It wasn't like, hey, we don't want to do it, so we bother us out.
This is certainly not a replacement for the normal budget presentations that we would be doing for our tentative in our final budgets in March and April.
Just to fly the ball and then the opportunities question. Would there be any issue if a member of the public just recorded it, shared with me, or without publishing it anywhere?
I think as long as they get permission and it's not intrusive to the meeting, that's, that's what our policy states.
Yep. Stayed up.
What I just said.
One thing I just wanted to clarify, that when we do have the budget meeting, it will be in a similar format to this meeting, so it's not going to be interactive with the public, it'll be interactive with the board and the presenters, and then the public will have an opportunity for comment at the end.
But we, there's a lot of, a lot of, historic, a lot of back and forth with the board.
No, that's, that's why I just...
It's a lot of like, the public won't be able to do that.
I want to, I want to, I want to set expectations.
I swear to this with the public.
Last 30 minutes.
Okay. All right, I need a motion to adjourn, please.